And. Should I try again?
No, you're fine. You just missed the first couple of minutes of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Being recorded.
All right, I'm trying to share my screen here. Can you guys see my uh? My slide there?
Yep, yeah.
So I figured I cut to the chase. I know that, you know, I have some, I have limited time here, but you know, these are the numbers of what your project looks like. And again, you know, one of the biggest drivers for doing these projects is savings, not just energy, but cost savings. So today, Southwick, you know, based on the inventory that we got from Randy and his team of 366 lights that are owned by your utility, you're paying roughly 64,000 and after you take ownership and then convert those lights, those costs go down precipitously down to below $20,000. So, you know, a significant savings for for the town of almost $45,000 a year. I said there are multiple drivers. That's, that's, that's one of the drivers. But the other big driver is, and you may not see this so much today, but if you, if you, if you try to look a little bit into the not too distant future, the streetlight infrastructure is no longer just for streetlights. It's now your main delivery mechanism for all sorts of services, including public wifi, 5G. You can generate a lot of revenue by, by owning those assets through small cell densification and 5G, smart parking controls, smart traffic control. I know some of this stuff may sound futuristic, but as time goes on, these technologies become more and more prominent. And, and today, as we speak, they're completely integratable within the streetlight network. So, you know, when, when the cities and towns around Massachusetts and all around the Northeast were thinking about taking ownership of their streetlights, it was, it was really about taking ownership of a strategic asset, which, you know, when, when you look ahead, it's really not in your best interest to have that in the hands and control of the electric utility. Again, nothing against EverSource or National Grid or anybody else. It's just, you know, it makes sense. And it's why in most states where legislation exists for cities and towns to, to control that strategic asset, they do, they do take control of it. Lastly, is service levels. And I know this is always the biggest concern for any city in town when they think about taking ownership. Hey, how are we going to do this? EverSource has maintained our streetlights forever. You know, can we really do this? Well, first off, you do have an option and we do offer to many, many of our clients maintenance, maintenance, complete maintenance services. So you don't have to take it on yourself if you don't want to. You don't have to have us do it. If you rather have a local contractor that you know and trust to do that, we can put together the maintenance package for you. We have a maintenance management platform, which is very, very easy to use, which you can layer on top of that. The bottom line is when you migrate from your high pressure sodium lights to LED streetlights, your incidence of failure goes down, goes down precipitously. Failure rates, and we've got over 350,000 units out in the marketplace, our real failure rates are less than 0.3% per annum. So this technology works, it lasts, it's warranted for 10 years. Both the luminaires, as well as the smart controls or the standard photocells, all the equipment is guaranteed for 10 years. So when we talk about maintenance costs, and those are included in the calculations that you see here in the operating cost analysis, what you're, what we're really estimating are what your labor cost would be for maintenance, because you will not, you will have no equipment cost for, for the first 10 years. I've said a lot, so I'll take a, I'll take a break here. And if there are any questions from anybody about, about what this is and, you know, how you go about, how you go about taking ownership of your streetlights.
Paul, who's the closest community to us that you've done work with?
West Springfield and Agawam. We did, but we did both of those projects. And I can, I can give you, I think Scott's still there over at West Springfield, Scott Moore. Gentleman who was over at Agawam moved on since then, but with, but there must be a couple of people that are still there that we worked with.
Randy, you want any input on this? You know, any questions? I know you've been looking at this and Dick has been looking at this to criticize or?
Yeah, I, Dick and I talked to Paul several times in the past few years. I think one of the hangups right now is, well, we're looking, there's funding, there's a saving, right? There's also costs to make those savings. So it's just how do you pay for that cost? I know we were looking at becoming a green community. I think we're still, there may be some opportunities. Once we do get that designation, that will help, help fund the, the cost to implement these upgrades. I will note that there's also some changes, you know, EverSource has a, they call a tariff sheet, tariff sheet, which is their, their, their rate sheet, basically. And they've changed a little bit in the past year, but there is, they, they are coming down. Their, their rates for LED lights are coming down. They're about a year ago, there was basically the cost for LED versus high pressure sodium was the same. You don't think that should be the case, but it actually, that's how we were charging. This past year, the new terror sheet has, is going down. So maybe it's, I don't want to take up all our time today, but maybe if you wanted to design someone to kind of look at this a little further, I can work with that.
Yeah, I think Paul realizes we're going to have to get more information and, and set a, set up a group or a couple of people together to work with you, Paul. See if we can't iron this out. Our town meeting is in May, so it's something that we'd have to look at fairly quickly. Because we're right in our budget season, we usually kind of firm up our budgets by the end of March, beginning of April. Is that workable with you, Paul, or?
Hey, you, you, look, I'm at, I'm at your disposal. You know, Randy and I, you know, we, we've been, we've been talking about this for many, for many years now. So, you know, a few more weeks or a few more months is, is not going to make a difference. Just responding to a couple of comments that Randy made on the green communities funding and, and Randy's let me know now for a number of years that you folks were waiting for a green communities grant as, you know, potential funding source for the project. The DOE are just announced a few weeks ago that they're probably, we're not going to have any monies available for, for streetlight projects under the green communities funding. So if you're waiting for that to do your project, you know, you may not, you may never have, have those funds available. If you're lacking funds or if it's not in the budget, and Randy asked me to do this, and we've done this a few times for you, updating it as, as interest rates have gone up over time, it's still quite viable for you to, for you to fund this whole project or for us to finance it for you with TLP financing, tax exempt lease purchase. So depending on whether you use standard photocells or smart controls, it's completely cash flow positive. You're generating positive cash flow in year one. There's no capital outlay. Interest rates are still, you know, reasonable for TLP financing. They're in the four and a half percent range right now. So you, you can, you can do this project tomorrow without spending a penny of, of capital budget. And the savings are 100% predictable, because unlike some other energy conservation projects with streetlights, when you know the reduction in wattage and you know how many hours your lights are on, you know how many kilowatt hours are being saved. And lastly, to Randy's point, and Randy asked us to go back to the drawing board and recalculate these numbers based on EverSource's tariff changes. We've done that. And there's been very little change in, 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 in your savings in the project. Utility rates historically tend to go up over time. That's been the tendency in, in EverSource territory in Massachusetts for, for many, many years. It's most probable that that will likely continue to occur. And you're, you know, your huge savings on these projects happens from day one. I go back to this initial slide. If you're looking at the, the annual distribution and delivery charges, these are the fixed charges that you pay EverSource for them owning and maintaining your light. And you'll see you have an 88% savings when you take ownership of those streetlights. That's what drove 75% of all the municipalities in Massachusetts to execute their right to, to, to take ownership of the streetlights. It's a no brainer. It really is a no brainer. There, there are so many benefits for Southwick to ream from this, and there are so few drawbacks.
Paul, is your firm an authorized state vendor or contractor from a procurement law point of view? Are you offering these services under a different exemption of the state law?
So Carl, I've, I've, I've sent to Randy and I'll send to you and I'll send to you folks again. When we, we started our first streetlight project with Brockton about a decade ago, we consulted with the Massachusetts Procurement Office and put together a procurement path for all the municipalities to contract our services under the guise of professional services in Massachusetts. I forgot what was something, something B, I forget what three, remind me what the procurement clause is. But it's, the way, the way it's done is we, we work with you on an open book basis. And we, we competitively bid out all labor and materials. We evaluate it for you. We share with you the results. You have veto power on all of our selections. And you contract us based on professional services. It's all, it's all based on Massachusetts procurement law. And many of the municipalities that have hired us, including Pittsfield, have done so under, under this framework.
Thank you, Paul. If you can send us all the information or send it to Carl, that'd be great. These slides that you had so that we can have them.
Will, will do, will do.
All right, all right. We will be in touch.
All right. Thank you for your time and have a good evening. Have a good rest of your meeting.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we're running a little behind. We're going to be with the town planner. John, come on up.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for meeting with us this evening. Before you, there's a request on behalf of the planning board to hold several hearings for bylaw modifications, potential bylaw modifications. These fall into broadly, let's say, three categories. We have contemplated short-term rental bylaw that was referred to the planning board sometime back. And the planning board then spun off a subcommittee last, last summer or so, and that continued into the fall and into December before it came to a close. And we have a recommendation from that subcommittee. So that's a, that's one item right there that the planning board would like to have permission to hold a hearing on and explore what a potential bylaw would look like under that scenario. The second category that I'll look at here is residential common driveways. There was an application earlier this year that through going to that process, it was revealed that there is a mathematical impossibility built into the bylaw. And we'd like to look at different ways to resolve that scenario. Essentially, we're looking at driveway width versus required separation to adjacent property lines. And within the allotted area for that all to happen, if you add up those three dimensions, well, you had to use creative math to make it work. So looking at different ways or flexibility for the board to examine that section right there. And the remainder of the requested bylaw modifications fall under a third umbrella that was driven by our MS4 permit and an exploration, a report that was produced through the last fiscal year and was brought to the planning board to look at ways where we could either embrace opportunities to improve stormwater runoff in general, whether that be by quantity or quality, reduce quantity, I should say, or identify that what barriers do we have built into our subdivision regulations, our general bylaws and our zoning bylaws to utilizing the best management practices, essentially looking at low impact development, green infrastructure, those opportunities to use nature-based solutions to improve the quality of stormwater and reduce that quantity. And so those would be following under our residents R28, or excuse me, 185 section 14, 18530 for off-street parking and loading, 18521 for state lots, and one, excuse me, 157 streets and sidewalks, a little bit of, we'll call it a, an offshoot of that discussion had the consultant looking at where do we have opportunities to embrace the use of purbius materials? And while we don't feel it's an appropriate opportunity from municipal standpoint, because you need to have specialized equipment to, to manage purbius paved surfaces, we shouldn't necessarily have in our regulations, prohibit private landowner or developer from utilizing those technologies for their properties.
Right.
Any questions?
Is chapter 157 under the purview of the planning board?
So we would not be holding a hearing under 157 without further consent. So I wanted to make sure we ran that by with all the town council and make sure that that was responsibly managed, understanding that, well, we inserted a general bylaw last year with the stormwater management. And a few quick preferences, opportunities to do so, but won't, won't take place without further consent. Or at least acknowledgement by the town council.
So I believe John is looking for a vote by the board to refer the particular items here that do fall under the purview of the planning board so that they can hold the necessary hearings under the law.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Need a motion? I'll make that motion under the, for the chapter 185 plus the public hearing for the short-term rental potential bylaw to be taken, for the planning board to hold public hearings for potential warrant articles for town meeting. Okay. And we're going to hold off on chapter 157 until we get certification? I think so. I don't know what's the right venue, but I never saw them for 157 before. That's a new section. I saw, I don't even know whose, whose law it is to, to, who would hold a hearing.
And that's perfectly fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Second, I'll just move into the motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Doug Mogul, hi.
Jason, hi.
We got some work.
I will do it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right. We're continuing. All right. Acknowledge payables warrant number 2319B dated 1/24/2023 in the amount of $193,622.83. I need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated 1/23/23. Doug Mogul, so moved.
Jason Crohn, seconded.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Jason Crohn, aye.
Accept executive session minutes dated 1/23/23. We've got plenty of counts. Doug Mogul, so moved.
Jason Crohn, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Jason Crohn, aye.
Okay. All right. All right, Randy, we have some bids. And since you're here, we can go over this with you. This, these are fiscal 23 DPW bids for paving surface treatments and fund source allocations. And has everybody had a chance to read over Randy's letter? Okay, go ahead, Randy.
We opened two bids. These are monies that are allocated last year for paving infrastructure. First bid for paving section of Miller Road and Robin Road. That's under the FY23 paving bid. We got four bids. BMW paving out of, they're in Connecticut, Southern Connecticut. They're a little bitter at just over $310,000. We have never worked with BMW, but they are, they do more work in Connecticut. They also are pre-qualified in Mass DOT, which was a precondition for the bid. So we're making a recommendation to award to BMW for the bid price. And then we did get one bid for surface treatments through Indus, which has been working under this name seal coating in the past years. That is for some micro bit, micro sealing on some of the neighborhood roads up south along our lake. And we've worked with this company in many projects over the past few years. So when they were just the one bidder of that project, so we're looking to award a contract to steel coating for the FY23 circuit treatments. And then as part of that, I did, there was a table at the very end. Last year, I worked with the board and the lower legislature to kind of allocate where all these funds are, we had money through ARPA, the rap money, chapter 90 money, and our local dollars all kind of went together for, to fund these projects. I am asking to request in that reallocation in the last table there. We're not changing any total dollars, any one, any, any one amount. But there are some limitations that we have to make sure we hit. First of all, the rap money that has to be fully spent by June 30. I actually bid for the micro seal came a little lower than I had allocated. So because of that, I'm just moving, moving some dollars around, make the numbers work on our end. So I, if there's any question on that, let me know. But it's, it's, I think pretty straightforward.
All right. So we'll take one at a time. The fiscal 23 paving of Miller Road and Robin Road, the, we're asked to award the bid to BMW paving for 310,180. So I need a motion for that. Doug Mogul, so moved. In second.
Jason Crohn, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Jason Crohn, aye.
All right. The next is for fiscal 23 surface treatments for Hummingbird Howell, Mockingbird Lane, Pine Knoll, Falcon Crest, Hunter Ridge and Mallard Lane. Seal coating for a bid of $187,055. I have a quick question before we make a motion. Okay. We did a couple of those roads last year with this process. How were they doing?
They're good. It's not a, it's not a surf, a true surface, right? It's a wearing surface, a wearing force.
Right.
It preserves the asphalt underneath it.
Right.
It's similar to what they did on Union Street in Washington.
Yes.
A while back.
A while back. Yeah, I wouldn't recommend, I would not have recommended that. And that's too heavily traveled.
You don't have to tell me about it.
But so we've done this work on lots of neighborhood roads.
It did hold up very well for.
Was Granado one of those?
We did Granado a year ago, yeah. Ear Run, Lexington Circle, Armory.
Yeah.
We did all those, all Liberty. I think this would actually complete that whole neighborhood. Been doing these things here for that product.
Extending the line. There's your motion then. I got a motion.
Motion seconded.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Jason Crohn, aye.
Okay. And Carl, do we need a motion on, on this last one, just to reallocate 54,529 to Fred Jackson Road Draining Project? Or that's just, we're just?
Well, I think you should acknowledge it in your minutes that you concurred with the director's recommendation.
Okay. So we'll all accept the motion to concur with the director's recommendation. Sure. All right, second. Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Jason Crohn, aye.
So we don't need a motion, but we got one in. That's right.
Aye, gotcha.
That way it's acknowledged. Randy, thank you very much. While you're right here, we've had a mild winter. How are we doing on salt?
Oh, jeez. Well, we've had several small storms treating events, but not, not nearly what you would expect by this time of year. By every change, right? So yeah, we have, we stocked our salt shed last summer. And there's still, it's now salt in there, so.
Okay, so we're good.
I would hope so, but you know, you may have just changed us.
Well, we had a US senator at the convention tell us that we're golden now.
February's always the worst.
That was the guy speaking in Yiddish? Yeah, yeah. Right. We're golden. So I just wanted to make sure it's true. Thank you, Randy.
February's always the worst.
That's, it's true. It is. All right. Select board goal and objectives. You know, I went through these. There's a few things that I saw that we could kind of remove and things that we need to add. Is that correct, Mr. Steinhardt?
Oh, yes, gentlemen. I think each one of you should be proposing items that you'd like to place on it. And then when we go to do that, we can also, some of these things have already been resolved and addressed and we can take those off.
Okay. You want to do that right now or take off some of these right now? And then we could, next meeting, we could add? Is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, you have, you know, Randy's working on the sidewalk issue. Economic development. The Congamond Road reconstruction. Randy, is that project closed out finally by DOT?
I'm afraid to ask.
I don't think it is, Carl.
How about you do this? Go ahead and ask them. See what they say, okay?
We're going to need to read it by the time we close it out.
You know, I'm, I'm ready to yell again, you know, I, I want to, you know, it's necessary.
I, number five and six are done.
Okay, so we're eliminating five and six.
It doesn't mean we don't do, it doesn't mean we won't do another community compact project for IT, but in terms of the one we had, that's done.
Okay.
But we'll have to see what else we're going to do. And then the next one is the high-speed one, and Doug can speak to that one.
I think that's ongoing, correct? All right. The fire station.
Yep, the masonry is complete. It was clean. The roof was done. The punch list is done. We are still waiting for the final invoice from the contractor, but the work is done.
Okay. All right. Established Channel 15 Volunteer Network. We're still trying to get that up and running. Promote volunteer opportunities and reappointments. Doug has continued to tweak that. Review transportation services for COA. We've met with Pioneer Valley and, and different agencies.
We've, we don't seem to get a lot of cooperation from the regional transit agencies.
Right. So I, I mean, I'd like to keep that there because, you know, rules and signage for open space parcel. I mean, that's being worked on, so I'd like to keep that there. Town hall roof replacement. The design is done.
Yeah, I think what we should, we should update that, Mr. Chairman, just to state that that and these projects, both of those are under contract. And the materials just came in for the roofing component. And we're supposed to be getting an update from Andy Barr.
Perfect, just before it starts to snow for a solid month. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's, that's why it doesn't, it does not make sense to undertake the project in February when we can look at late March or April.
Yeah, when I talk to Art, I, we both looked at each other and said, April, you know.
Right.
Absolutely. Green Energy Program, we had quite the discussion with them at the conference. You know, we're, we're what, one percentage short? And we're trying to figure.
One, one criteria. David Sutton and Art Lawler are working with them now. When you signed a local technical assistance vote a week or two ago, that was to ensure that we could finish the work that was required using Pioneer Valley Planning Commission money on that fifth criteria piece. The longest, biggest delay had to do with the information coming through the electric company.
Okay. I mean, we're almost there.
That's why we keep at it.
Okay. Road projects, we're going to continue with that. ARPA Phase One projects done. And we're on to ARPA Phase Two?
Yes, with the ARPA Phase Two, you, you used funds for paving that you earmarked and then some for the roof project. And then you have a, I, I believe it's somewhere along the lines of 900, still unencumbered, that the board needs to make a policy decision on. And Doug has given you some really good projects that you could spend that on.
He most certainly has. So has five other people in town, you know, that need money also. Broadcast capability project for municipal buildings.
I, I believe with our outside managed service provider and Ken Stomsky, we're almost done on that, but let me check.
Okay. We're going to put a question mark on that one.
Yep.
The slate roof in Kupola, that looks like that's going to be coming in. The uh, slate roof in Kupola, um, that looks like that's going to be coming in front of the uh. At the annual town meeting, is that correct?
I haven't seen anything come to us from the um. The report was given to the historical commission, and I haven't seen anything come from the historical commission yet.
Okay, I thought that uh, Art had already been in front of the community preservation.
Hmm, I'll make a note to check it, but. I haven't seen anything on their agenda. That's.
All right, if we can check on that, and then we'll also send some to historical, I know he met with historical.
No, I know he did that, but, but. I'm not sure, he would not be the, the historical commission would approach the select board. To have the select board and the supervisor builds the grounds address, and I'm not sure what. Art's role other than helping to facilitate the co- uh, the assessment. Would, would be any more than that.
Okay, let's see if we can't figure out and get all, everybody together. Um. Some people think they've already done their job, apparently. So if we need to do additional work, let's get it done. Uh, so if we can reach out to Arc Historical and Community Preservation, see where we're at. Uh, Deputy Chief Recruitment Process, I think we can uh.
Let's do it.
She's sitting there right now.
Just being there, she's sitting there, we can uh. Get rid of that. Okay, fiscal twenty-three budget. Fire Association Building, so those two can still stay on.
Well, fiscal year, we're gonna change that to the fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Okay.
And then the Fire Association Building. Uh, that is under contract for the um, the asbestos abatement part.
Okay. So it's uh. We have begun the process.
Yep.
And then next week, we can uh. Uh. People can talk about what we want to add on here, I think there was a couple that we've mentioned already. Uh, we'll have to just uh. Go back through our notes. All right. We have to approve the Lake Management uh, LMC calendar year twenty-twenty-three ramp attendant maintenance pay rates. Everybody had a chance to review that?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think LMC does a pretty good job of. Uh, keeping everything in check and also making sure we're in compliance with the minimum wage. So. Somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
He's second.
We'll second the motion.
All in favor, roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Paul, I.
Okay, we have notice of sixty-eight, sixty-one A withdrawal for seventy-two Mort Vining Road. Uh, thirty point oh eight acres. Uh, this is a request from Oak Ridge Custom Home Builders, Inc. Uh, South Hadley, Mass.
This the same parcel that came in front of this board once before, and then it was withdrawn?
Correct.
Do we need to circulate it back again to the relevant boards?
Uh.
It's already, it's already been sent to them, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So I, I think everybody's, it's pretty much looked and tried to see if there was any way. Of uh, securing funds.
This is just locked in, it's unfortunate the letter's not dated, if you turn it upside down. It was dated January twenty-third, was it this request was locked in? I think you have to, I think as a courtesy, you should have. Ag and Concom at least have the opportunity to meet and make a determination that they. They've been apprised, there's no, no harm in carrying this under whole business for. Uh, a week or two weeks till they meet.
Sure.
It's been sent to the different groups.
Okay.
I, I hear you, bud.
All right, we'll table that. Okay, requests for waiver for timely expenditure of fiscal nineteen and fiscal twenty, community development block grant funding. You want to explain that, Carl?
Well, that's, that came through from Erica, and I did um. Put a call into her, and I have not heard back from her, but this would necessitate the chairman having to sign off. On extension so that they could finish. Um, if it makes sense. A certain parts of the FY nineteen and FY twenty original grant. Scope of services, so. Um, I think it's important that what you have in front of you, that you authorized chair. To act on that once we confirm a few things with Erica Johnson at the Regional Planning Agency.
Okay.
And again, some of these things have just taken time, I mean, you, you, the board is well aware of issues from. Uh, the COVID and other logistics and supply sources and things like that, so. Um, we're not surprised by this.
Okay, so if we take a motion authorizing the chairman to sign off, uh, if necessary.
Light nodding of head, Carl, is that's what you're looking for?
Uh, yes, Mr. Vice Chairman.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion.
Seconded.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I. Jason Paul, I.
All right, that's uh, moving on to new business, discuss local town election ballot questions due to town clerk treasure collector. By April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Um. We can digest that. Um. Carl, any other new business?
Uh, let's see, I had um. Uh, let's see, Nadine started today, she came aboard, so that's good news. And um, she's getting settled in and meeting people, so that process will take a while. I met with Comcast last week about their business offerings. And I've provided to yourselves a copy of that meeting packet with them. In their letter to the community, and I also sent it to the High Speed Internet Committee, because they would like to appear before that committee another time.
Okay. Doug, new business?
Uh, no new business today, sir.
Jason, new business?
No new business, no.
Okay, uh, the only thing I had and probably should have discussed this at the last meeting. Uh, that's something we picked up at the uh, convention. That we're probably better off, according to the Attorney General's Office, to come up with a flag policy. Um, ahead of any potential problems. Uh, since the Supreme Court ruling, so. Would anybody like to uh? Take that on, or do you want me to take it on, or? You'll take it, okay, if you could work with uh, Mr. Steinhardt and, and uh. Maybe uh. Do a little brainstorming, I got different thoughts on it too, and I'm sure Doug has different thoughts on it, so. But, okay, so Jason's gonna. As a matter of fact, we can add that to uh. All business and goals and objective, you know. Um, all business, uh, North Pond, uh, the chief uh. Landis is setting up a meeting uh, with uh. All the parties that attended our first meeting. Uh, the sewer system, uh, we're having a uh. Uh, an internal meeting Friday, Carl, is that correct?
Um. I think, I, I think we were gonna be having that on sewers.
Sewers, that's right.
Right, so, but I think there is another, there is something else coming. And maybe the lieutenant can refresh our recollection since he's on the call.
Oh, we're going back to North Pond, or?
Yeah, if you, right, if you thought you wanted to deal with that one, so.
Oh, okay. Lieutenant Vanish, did you have something to add about the North Pond?
Yeah, I spoke with the chief this morning, he's uh. Sent out an email to the different stakeholders, he's looking for a meeting, I would say mid uh, February at this point.
All right, thanks, Red.
Sure.
Okay, okay, now we're back to sewers, I thought uh, you and uh. Attorney Coyle and Randy and I were getting together Friday.
We are in the morning.
Okay, okay, so that's being worked on, we're gonna do that Friday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, marijuana dispensary, we got the uh. Our survey going on. Uh, marijuana host agreement for Hudson Drive Facility, I saw some email this week from their attorney.
Correct.
Correct, so I believe the attorneys are.
Attorney.
Uh, attorney, okay. Uh, the same thing for seventy-four College Highway, update on the transfer, I haven't heard anything.
No, Russ, they never have got back to us, I mean, I would have thought that if uh. That uh, transfer was gonna happen, that we would have heard back from them.
Okay.
I mean, it, it is after all, what's gonna happen there is the uh, the site permitting is probably gonna lapse from a special permit point of view.
Right. Well, we met with them, it's up to them, and the ball's in their court.
There was a long period of time during COVID that permits didn't toll, and they resumed that, so someone's gonna have to check that map.
We, well, we had them, we, when they met with us, Doug, we had. Both individuals go up and meet with the building inspector that day.
Good.
All right, opening on the South of Housing Authority, I still haven't gotten anything, so we'll keep that posted. And open.
Yep.
Uh, speed limits on Deer Run area, that's still being uh, looked at. Uh. The municipal uh, electricity issue, Jason been doing work on that. And uh, the Greens West Road acceptance.
Yeah, uh, Mr., um, Mr. Chairman, I did receive. This evening, information uh, from Mark Beglane with the. The process votes that we're gonna need to use, like the advertisement. Uh, the calling of the hearing, the layout, and in, uh, in acceptance adoption votes. Um, as well as the draft town meeting art. So those items are, are being developed, I just have a couple of more procedural questions to ask him about uh. The manner in which it's advertised, and the butter notification part, and then um. Um. In some, you know, some other details, but I also want to make sure I'm gonna send copies of that to our DPW and our planning board, because they're gonna be. Involved in giving recommendations, um, the evening of the hearing, when the developer comes in as the petitioner.
Okay.
Because it's been a while since we did one of these gentlemen, so that's why I had to have the attorney. Double check whether or not the legal process that we thought we used to use. Is still uh, updated, you know, and relevant and germane.
Okay, uh, any other old business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Mowgli, I just have a couple, uh. One, it's more perfunctory, but I'd like to add to the list of boards that. We added secretarial support to, to the Board of Assessors and LEPC. For them to be able to facilitate hybrid meetings.
Okay.
Um.
LEPC has a secretary that does hybrid meetings, we just did, I just was on it the other day.
It's, it, it was not recorded, and it's not the first time, and I think that that's a full-time director of the. Up, uh. Director in the town, I think we should bring a secretarial support whose job is to facilitate the Zoom, someone could spin in there and, and run it. But it, while the meeting's going on, it's a lot, I mean, you see it even here, right, we didn't start the meeting recording again today. Um, it, we need to have that kind of support in order to facilitate that. Um. And then I'll just make a request to carry the goals and objectives and the sixty-one A removal under old business. And then uh, update on the marijuana survey, there's two hundred and fifty-six online responses so far. Um, but it looked to be about over a hundred. Mail-in ballots that came in with the census's, census, sensei? Census's, so. Uh, I did uh, corral a volunteer who will key those into the online survey.
Okay.
I do fear there'll be a little bit of duplicity of people did both, but that. It's not a scientific survey in the first place, we're asking a simple, single question.
Right, right.
Um, I did see some commentary in the responses so far that. That the survey was confusing. And um, I just have to scratch my head at that one, it's a one-liner, um. And then also just a note in regards to. The host agreements, I have to reach back out to. Uh, town attorney, we may have to develop a social justice and equity policy. And have that in place in order for us to be able to have even an impact fee mentioned in the. Host agreement, that's settled law.
All right, and we can probably steal that from another community.
Absolutely.
All right. Wow. Borrow.
That was from, I'm sorry, I forgot you weren't law enforcement.
We will borrow that from another community.
It was, you know, we, uh, I attended that seminar at the MMA. And that was all the rage, this, the. Triple C now has straight review authority and approval authority over any host agreements, and they will nix anyone and not allow the collection of any impact fee. Um. If you don't have such a policy.
Yeah. All right, anything else, Doug?
Uh. So.
Jason?
Uh, just the, I'm still working on municipal aggregation, I'm gonna be reaching out to the central maintenance gentleman from West Springfield again. Um, and made contact with the original Mr. Capandoa. From Colonial Power Group, and then I met a Mr. O'Rourke at the MMA. Event was also one of the first, I guess there's three certified. Uh, aggregators, I guess you'd call them. Um, so when we get a little bit farther down the road, I obviously want to have them come in here or come on the Zoom. And talk a little bit more about it, this sample warrant article we were given just. Indicates Colonial Power Group, and we don't, we're not, uh, obviously. Committing to anybody at this point. Um, I do have somebody that asked me today about openings on town boards. Um, so. I can. In commissions, so. Um. And what was your thing, I want to say? Uh, oh, the, since it falls into my electricity realm, I would like to volunteer with, as far as the lights. Adding that into the. Look into that, work with Randy and the gentleman from. The wheel. Real turn, real turn.
Sure.
Right idea.
Right idea, no pun intended. All right, we're here all night, folks, we're here all night, all right, all right, just.
Uh, on the appointment thing, I think we should, um, I mentioned it last week, and um, I can show. Jason what we've done, just so people, if people are asking, go on the town website. Click on any board, click through, and you can see the appointments, renewals, and expirations for every town board and committee. So you'll have an idea of what boards and committees positions that are appointed, elected are coming up. We are gonna have something on the town website. Uh, I'm hoping around election time, because we usually don't do appointments until. June. Sometimes later, but where people will be able to submit a letter of interest without having to submit a letter of interest, it's a form, my name is, click the board I'm interested in, the board I'm on, whatever. And get click send, and it goes in, just like, it'll look kind of like the marijuana survey. Except without the marijuana, but it's easy to tabulate, it's easy to circulate, it's easy to share the data. And easy to present to the board and, and not having a singular paper file that we have to. Borrow and sort through, it'll be much more efficient.
Where do they go?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
I'm not, I, I mean, I've been working on the survey itself, on the, the form itself, but it's, it'll be right on the, some. It'll all, no, it'll be all on the select board webpage, just like the marijuana survey, it'll just say, you know. And there'll be a link to it from the homepage. Um, anyway, I forgot, I had one question, does anyone know when the census is due?
I think they asked that it be back uh, within thirty days, something like that.
Because that's when I'll close the.
Not sure.
The survey.
We will check, can you check with Michelle tomorrow and notify Mr. Mowgli?
And the, the interim, intern clerk at the uh, that's been working in the town clerk said that they would help fire in the surveys.
There you go. There you go, all right. Having no other business, we will be going into executive session not to reconvene. A motion to go in executive session pursuant to mass general laws, chapter. Thirty-eight, section one, one, two, and three, chapter two fourteen, section one B. Litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining of police union. Coalition, buyer I A F F, buyer chief, deputy chief. Labor counsel, library unit, non-union staff and clerk union. UPS EU executive session regarding mass general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, one, two, three, chapter two fourteen, section one B, and. Exception one, to discuss the reputation character, physical condition or mental health, rather than professional competent. Rather than professional. rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss discipline or dismissal or complaints, the charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual. The individual being discussed and such, you guess, shall be notified and ready by the public body at least forty-eight hours prior to proposed executive session, provided however that notification may be waived upon unwritten agreement of the party, not to reconvene an open session. Exception two, move to go into executive session to conduct collective, collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel to not to reconvene an open session, move to go into executive session to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. The chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and, and two, not to reconvene an open session. Exception three, move to go in executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that's a chair move to go into executive session, conduct strategy session, preparations for negotiating non-union personnel to not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session, discuss strategy, respective litigation, that's a chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body, and not to reconvene an open session. Regarding chapter two fourteen, section one B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy, the superior court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in connection therewith to award damages. So roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Just, Jason Perron, I.
All right, we can shut that door, and we need to.